All set? About six blocks, we'll call the meeting to work. And during the roll call, everybody is in attendance, so we're gonna stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Welcome, everybody. First item up will be our yearly election of officers. Going off a lot of memory on this, how to do this. So do we have a nomination for board chair?
I'll nominate John Carter.
Nomination for me. Do you have any other nominations for board chair? Any other nominations for board chair? Any other nominations for board chair? Okay, so nomination cease. We'll just do the proclamation vote, or should we vote on it? How we go for affirmation? Or we take a vote, so.
I think we voted on each one, didn't we last year?
Okay, that's fine, okay. All those in favor of myself as board chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Thank you. The nomination for vice chair is open, do we have any nominations? Do we have any nominations for vice chair?
I'll nominate Molly, for vice chair.
Nomination for Molly. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Molly as vice chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Welcome. And we have nomination of clerk open. Do we have any nominations for clerk?
I'll nominate Brenda Wilson.
Okay, nomination for Brenda. Any other nominations for clerk? Any other nominations for clerk? Any other nominations for clerk? There are no more nominations, we'll close nominations. All those in favor of Brenda as clerk, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Brenda, you're clerk. And we have nominations for treasurer. Do we have any nominations? Treasurer. Any nominations for treasurer? Any nominations for treasurer?
Stacy, are you? Andrew, et cetera.
I'll nominate Stacy.
We have a nomination for Stacy. Do we have any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? Hearing no other nominations, all in favor of Stacy for treasurer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Stacy, treasurer. Now we got committees, so we have... Finance is what we've had before, personnel facilities, and policy committees, so... Might have some discussion on this, so... You have anything to... Any discussion before we decide on what we wanna do?
Well, yeah, I did visit about possibility of either breaking... Breaking up the finance committee a bit, just after the last November meeting, there were, I think I... Six different topics that were covered at the finance committee, it seems like there's a heavy lift with the finance committee and things, and... The policy committee just separately, last time we met was August. And it, you know, that, it's pretty straightforward what the policy committee does, what they thought policies, and... And it just seems there's a heavy lift on the finance committee, so... But I think, I would already sound silent, but, you know, covered health insurance, it covered fund balance policy, audit, enrollment analysis, strategic planning, budget revision, staffing contracts, excuse me, so, that's, I'd like to bring that forward. To consider.
So we try to divide that up into separating like buildings and grounds, or... A lot of that does kinda fall under finance, so I don't know. I'm open to ideas. Do we have more committees, or are we gonna bring this to a... In the old days, we used to do work sessions for everything, so we discussed everything, and then we had two meetings upon. But the struggle was trying to find times that worked for everybody, not everybody made it, and we'd be in confusion about what we talked about the last meeting if you couldn't make it, so...
If we set those ahead of time, though, like the year of the board meetings, then we know. At least that was my recommendation in looking through what other districts do for committees. It was kinda seemed like they either had just one, or they had many. And with the topics of the strategic planning, and enrollment analysis, and needs assessment all coming up, I just wonder if we shouldn't be as a board talking about all those items on regular work sessions.
Couldn't we keep the finance committee and the policy committee, as far as the finance committee doing like negotiations and stuff, 'cause I think that's one of the bigger things they do?
Yes.
And then maybe just have work sessions to talk about some of the other things? So there's not so much of it that just goes on the finance committee, maybe? I mean, I'm open to whatever, but...
But the districts have a negotiation committee, so...
Yeah. Bus contract, that kinda stuff goes under the finance committee, but... But I would agree, there's a lot that goes under the finance committee currently, too. I've been unbroken, I think, yeah, there's a lot more information that goes through the finance than the... The policy is very straightforward.
What were the main six that you had from last time?
Um... Uh, yep, the enrollment analysis, audit was mentioned, health insurance, um, fund balance policy. I know when, you know, the building project, that was with the finance committee, with the... Over the track. Whole field.
Or do we just maybe scrutinize a little bit more when we have it with, you know, anything strategic related comes to a work session type? And then, you know, health insurance, that's finance. Fund balance, that'll be finance. But, uh...
Is there anywhere where it defines what, like, the finance committee does? I couldn't find anything.
We'll just kind of, be an add-on committee, or kind of a committee we dedicated. So? Discussion.
How about separating that out a little bit, and going with six work sessions a year? Like every other month? For a work session to start with? And then like the finance committee, for sure. Be negotiations, and I think health insurance, and the fund balance. Is there any way of, if you wanted to break out somehow, or... I mean, it is hard to break, 'cause they all pull off each other.
Mr. Carver, do you think? Is it all workable?
Yeah, either way, would work. If I do work sessions, or... Six is good. I think if we do a work session, it'd have a purpose.
I don't wanna have a meeting for the same thing, I mean...
And just coming up with things, and that's... There's gonna be one here, that's gonna have to be in about February, March, probably March sometime? Enrollment, enrollment analysis, yeah.
Could we discuss having that work session anyway?
Yeah, I do. I think of, uh... So I've been most recently on the finance committee. And I'm trying to think, you know, during the committee meetings, which are not public, is there a lot of...
They're public.
Oh, the committee meetings are. Oh. That goes, takes away my thought that... I was going down the confidential, privileged communication road.
Yeah, a lot of the other boards I've been on, they do a lot of the committees, like MSBA and mixed-country even. Each has their own roles.
So we'd have work sessions independent of, I mean, on days other than school board meetings? Are you talking work sessions on the same day as school board meetings? Is that the direction that this discussion going? The reason I ask is if we have a work session on the same day that the school board meeting, why wouldn't we just have a school board meeting and incorporate those things into the school board agenda?
I guess I found their school board meetings are, they're more official versus in a work session, we'd just be able to discuss things in conversation back and forth. Problems solved together.
Sometimes they could go a half hour, sometimes they could go three hours.
I, Brenda, I like your, I mean, just starting with every other month, on a work session with the items that are, and then could we define more, you said with the finance, you know? Is it negotiations and personnel in the finance committee? Or negotiations and health insurance?
And I think that would be appropriate in finance, but is that something you wanna address in a work session, or?
Well, I think it can...
I think we kinda have the answer now.
I think it can carry over. You know what I mean?
Still, yeah. So do we need a motion to change this, or do we just do it?
Just do it. Could, just for one other clarification, maybe, I know when the, like, agendas come out for those, the committee meetings, they're just kinda one item, if there's a list of things, could they be more specific on the agenda, even the policy committee, you know, what policies we're reviewing on that? On that agenda that gets posted?
We try to stay broad, so we have more freedom to talk about, when you specify certain items, you're limited to just those items. So that's why, for example, when we have a committee meeting, we say discussion of budget, so we can try to encompass and discuss everything, because if you say budget, personnel, you're limiting yourself to only speaking about personnel, that's why we use broad language when we publish things.
So, we have two committees still?
We need a po...
Policy and finance.
Where are we at with policy committee meetings at?
So policy committee, we've had staff out most of the fall, so now, as you can see, our policies are rolled back. So we have some left off. So we'll have some policies coming up here that we have to go through, so policy committee will be up meeting here, probably, I would say, February? And then probably again in the spring, so two more probably before the end of the year. School year. For policy committee. Negotiations will get busy, just, you know, when you're on the, if you're on the negotiations, it really depends on when it works for the negotiators, for the teachers. That does get pretty long, so we might start at five, and we might end at midnight. We'll go as long as we're accomplishing things, working with them, and there'll be multiple nights throughout the summer, so you're gonna have a lot of summer evenings, 'cause we'll do a lot of it starting in June. So in the past, it's been June, July, August, we've been fortunate, the last two negotiating terms to be done by September, but I'm not sure that's gonna happen every, every time. Then after teachers, then we work with support staff and administration. And then every two years is the bus company.
And we do this here, right?
Bus company, no.
Both opposites.
Okay. You think the policy committee would be something we would maybe incorporate into the work sessions? Or even policy committee here?
Well, um, just from, I mean, that, when there are policies to review, I'd say that's just really quite a technical and bring recommendations forward, so I wouldn't see getting rid of the policy committee. I was just more about just clarity on the finance committee, in what the goal is there. Like I said, it just seems like, even when you talk about negotiations, there's a heavy lift on that committee, on those three folks. And policy is, you know, meeting a couple times a year. So how, how can we, how can we help with that heavy lift?
What's been nice with the finance committee, in being part of negotiations, is they're seeing everything. So we're, we're always talking about the same items, we know what's going on, so when we're talking about the budget, what impacts the budget? It's nice that the finance committee has knowledge of all the different areas we were dealing with finances in the past, it's been nice to have that.
So I think we just keep the same, and maybe we... I, I think for anything long-range plan, anything from this point forward is gonna be in a work session anyways, so... But maybe some we look at with each time we have a talk, finance committee, just kinda scrutinizing, say what can be pulled for a work session.
You also can have a finance, they can have a negotiated team, too, I mean, you can go there and separate them, and separate those two.
I would see that as being harder.
What's that?
I would see that as being harder if you split them two, 'cause they really go hand in hand. So if you're on negotiations, but you're not on the finance committee, there's a lot back on you're missing.
We call it the finance slash negotiating? So we get three committee members, and we always have an alternate, right?
For the finance. Could, could we say that the finance committee is the personnel and negotiations? And if there are other items, that they come to a work session? Then like you said, then like everyone's hearing, 'cause we don't want the negotiations committee not to miss out on information, but just in that same note, then the, the board should have that information.
What I'd love to add, too, is having a finance committee, and then you have, after a finance committee, you have a work session sometime right after that. So it brings everyone together, so you have a small committee to talk about different items, to get recommendations, or a committee to kinda look at things? And then you bring it to the, to the board?
Yeah.
To have a work session discussion on with everyone?
Cool.
Then you communicate everything that you talked about at the committee meeting.
I guess, what is that, right?
I'm gonna go back to you just being really specific what the finance committee does, and if there's other things that we can do them in a large work session, that's just from my perspective.
Yeah, on the other boards I'm at, we did kind of a summary, kinda like what Mr. Carver gives us. We just kinda trust the process. But I think instead, we can scrutinize some of the things we break, and see if it can fall into a work session. It's made things go more efficiently, I think. We can hook up the other board members here, and having more work sessions could get them up to speed quicker on what's kinda going on, we've had veterans for a while, so... So... Well, shall we start with finance committee, and who must be on that? Does the board chair still need to be on that?
In the past, it's been that way, it's just been nice to have the board chair.
So did we decide anything on finance committee, uh, policy committee, work sessions and stuff like that, or are we not? What's, what's the plan?
I don't think we'd like to work sessions. We'd like to add any more work sessions.
So the next one will be in about March, if we get the enrollment analysis all complete, we'll plan up a work session that works for everyone.
But we'll do the finance committee before that, maybe, or, and then report to the...
Bring that to the enrollment work session?
Possibly, if needed, if, if needed. If not, we can just bring everyone together and have a work session.
Okay.
So enrollment analysis, when they're done, they will come here and present to the whole board, not to the finance committee, to the whole board.
I think that might have been some confusion that maybe was part of your confusion, maybe? I mean, I think, um, I don't know, I just felt like maybe the understanding was that the finance committee decided to do this, and that, and the other thing, and it was all said and done, and it wasn't, I mean, we didn't pick, you know, or we didn't do any of that foreseeable stuff yet, that's something that we would do as a, as a board, as a whole.
Yeah, I mean, as a board, we haven't really gone over, maybe you're really on health insurance, and so, or just handled by administration, so... Just using that as an example. So we'll keep the two, let me call it the finance negotiations committee? So we'll have more work sessions?
I would like to be on the finance committee, if it works.
Anyone else? Throw my people that out. I'm sure you know about money, but... Sorry.
There'd be a lot to learn.
Yeah. Do we have an alternate for finance?
I can be the alternate?
And we're keeping it the same as negotiations? Mr. Carver, is that...
It's all we've been over the years, yeah.
Policy committee? Might be on that.
I can be.
Okay. And Molly?
Thank you.
Stacy?
Please, yeah. Great luck, thank you, Jim.
Okay. Do we need an alternate for that?
We haven't had one in the past.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna, we don't need to vote on this, right?
Correct.
Okay. So that's how we'll present it, and then we will add, every spend the goal of six work sessions, or every couple months, or...
If we could schedule it every other month? And, and I'll however, communicate topics that anyone feels would...
What months don't work for admin, you know, what are you guys busiest?
Principals are all in July, usually, unless they're hiring. Some programming? Just thought that would be July.
Do like a survey monkey, and see what works the best for everybody, or...
The next one would really depend on when that enrollment analysis is all done. When they're, when it works for them to report. Maybe send out something for dates.
How about following MSBA, I thought it was nice, though, I think it was first year I was on the board, to have a work session after MSBA, to just bring back what sessions we went to, anything we learned? Any ideas that might be helpful for the district?
We've done that some years, about every year. Do that for February? Maybe before the meeting, or do it after the meeting? February meeting?
Listen, of course, what would work for everyone, I mean, really what we'd have to do is, was that's gonna have to send out dates that work?
Or are we looking, like, years ago, we used to, I don't know, seven, the first Wednesday of the month, and then we had a regular day? One day or Wednesday? Or do we do something like that, or do we look and see what works the best for everybody?
What if we schedule February, and we put that as the agenda item? As one of the schedule?
We don't need to make it an agenda item, do we?
I, I, I meant unofficially, just...
Oh, no, okay.
School board meeting for, on the February school board meeting?
Uh, on a February work session, or following MSBA?
Because we have a February 10th school board. That's early in February.
Early, or maybe end of January, if we can.
Do it after the February 10th meeting? It's not earlier than that. What days work the best for everybody, as far as work session days? Mondays, Wednesdays, or...
Looking at the majority, this group is gonna be Wednesdays.
I guess. Wednesdays. Molly?
Greg? Sundays.
Actually, I don't know if that's ever gonna be entertained, but maybe preferred.
Anything in the handbook? No.
Could we just maybe do like a survey month or something for, to find a first date?
Yeah, let's go now.
Sometime after MSBA?
Yep, we could do that.
We'll come there.
Okay. Well, let's move on, do we have, uh, next item up will be to approve the meeting agenda? Anything that needs to be addressed on that? Before? Do there things on there? And Lucian?
I'll make a motion to have the meeting agenda.
Motion by Brenda?
All set.
And by Stacy? Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Aries, opportunity for visitors to address the board? We're struggling their shoulders, so we're on it. Okay, we have some acknowledgements, we have Stacy, who completed MSBA Leadership Development, pages one, two, three, and four. You probably put us on the threshold.
Ours.
Yes. And, there's a word here? Do we need picture tag?
Picture junk. No, please.
Or did you rather do this afterwards?
I did, no.
Okay.
Mr. Breen, turn it.
I can be here. Superficial.
Yes. Would you like to be?
I can, whoop, no, I'm too bold.
We would've been all over this. They would have been all over this.
Who's better at this than I? Looks just like you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And next item up is food shelf and student body for raising funds and food items. Do you have any to add, Mr. Cork?
Yeah, congratulations to Ms. Ramirez, nice work, and to all the students and staff for raising funds and working on the food shelf. Both buildings is a good contest, fun contest between the two schools.
I believe, did I still win?
I don't think so.
Mr. Breen was, I think Mr. Breen was talking about over here.
I don't, I don't think she's got a tax rate.
So we don't have a winner. Let's move on. Mr. Martinez, you have a Finance Director.
Yeah, yes. All right. Welcome to December. So, our Treasurer's Report in front of you is for the month of December. We're going to go into a little bit of detail, just so Mr. Sorin can kind of understand the layout of our Treasurer's Report practically. What we have in front of us is a consolidated cash flow statement, to letting the Board know where we are with all of our finances. Up on top, we have our Minnesota Liquid Asset Fund, which is a mutual fund that's set up by the state of Minnesota. And that's where all the school districts participate. So when we have federal grants, when the state pays us money, it goes directly into the Minnesota Liquid Asset Fund. From there, then we have the designated bank that we choose every, every so often. And then from there, we pull from our investment account down to our checking account. So up on top, Minnesota Liquid Asset Fund, our investment account, we started with $5.7 million. We've received $1.5 million in state, in addition to food service. Food service money that comes in from all the meals that we claim to the state and the federal government. From that, I drew $1.8 million into our checking account to cover our monthly expenditures. So total investment on hand at the end of the operating month was just a little over $5.5 million. In the checking account, this is a fluctuation in our checking account. We separate by different funds, so when we get money in our checking account, we see it as a whole. But those dollars that sit there are predetermined by which fund they serve. Right? The general fund looks a little bit, looks a little bit like, whoa, why do we have a negative balance? We're always catching up with the state. They always pay us in our years. So you're gonna see the general fund kind of get back into the group of things when we have big levy payments come in, or towards the end of the fiscal year. So don't let that scare you, we always look kind of at the bottom line. We have two, four, we have two, four, we have six operating funds. We have the general fund, where the majority of the structure of our operations happens. That's where we pay the majority of our bills, that's where we pay the majority of our employees. All of our utilities run through here. We have food service, that's a federal fund, that's directly related to the food service operations. Kitchen, we pay our kitchen staff out of there, and all of the food that we, that we pay. Community Ed, Community Ed encompasses a part of our early childhood education. Our club bikes, which is our before and after daycare, in addition to other programs that we serve, like open gym, and summer rec, and all those things. Debt service is where we pay all of our debt. So we have two payments throughout the year. The first one is in August, where we pay our debt servicer, which is Wells Fargo. We pay the interest in August, and then coming up here on the end of January, we pay interest and principal. So you're gonna see that in the next report report. This is where the majority of our levy dollars come in, so when we certify in December, we're gonna collect that the next, the next calendar year, and then we're gonna collect that money. We put it into Fund Seven, and that's primarily what pays down our debt, our building bond. Our trust fund is our scholarships and our student activity accounts. These are the fundraising efforts that our student activity accounts advisors and coaches do. So that's, that's how we kind of break out the dollars. So at the beginning of the school, at the beginning of the month, we had $664,000 sitting in our checking account. We had a total deposit of just a little over $1.8 million, of which part we drew from our investment accounts, to fulfill our obligations. We had a total accounts payable of $536,000. This is all the bills that you see on Pages Two and Three, all the bills that run on a monthly basis in our checking account. And then we have payroll expenditures. So this is all the payroll expenditures and fringe benefits that run through the school district. So on a monthly basis, how much we pay up all of our employees in the school district. So at the end of the month, cash inflows, minus cash outflows, we had just a little over $1.5 million sitting in our checking account. And then at the end, we just come away in the two, same, the total cash on hand, just, just a little over $70 million. Now, like I said, Big Rock's coming up. Here at the end of January, we have a big debt payment, so you're gonna see that drop significantly. And then we build it up over time again. Any questions on the consolidated cash flow statement? Anybody? Okay. Then, the next couple pages, again, this is all the payables that run through our checking account. If you have any questions about any of them, or why we do it, why we're paying it out, we have a basic, all the documentation for up to seven years or so. So if you have any questions, or you want to see any backup of any of the payables, let me know, I know you have paid the schools. But that's all I have for you guys. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Cork?
Enrollment 10th into January is right at 800. So we're up a couple students since December, which is good. MSBA conference, just a reminder, January 16th and 17th. Just a reminder, on the Thursday afternoon, we have the luncheon, so we have a table. Tickets reserved at the luncheon for all those who are attending. Few School Board agenda items for you. Under the consent items, under Personnel, just Julie Jones, a full-time evening custodian at the high school. She turned in her resignation here. Hiring Logan Norris, the open gym supervisor on Sundays, so he's gonna supervise open gym. And then we hired students for the skating rink to work after school, and then on the weekends. So those are the students that we hired for them, so it's nice to get our students some, some jobs, some responsibility. Under Business Items, A, approve the resolution directing Administration to make recommendations for reductions. This is a yearly approval. We do this every year for Administration to look at our enrollment and look at our staff. And then, B, is approve the second reading of following policies. We approved the first reading, I believe in August. With staff being out here in the fall, now we're back at looking at our policies again. So we need to approve the second reading for Policy 416, Policy 504, Policy 524. Again, the Board approved the first reading of these three in August. I think that's about it. I talked about the MSBA conference, and then the next School Board meeting, just a reminder, is on February 10th. So, that's all I have.
Any questions? Okay, thanks. We're gonna move on to consent items. Approved, item A, approved Board meeting minutes on December 18th. 2024 Regular School Board Meeting, meaning financial claims and December bills. See Treasurer's Report. D, accept donations, so we have student accounts, $80 Laura Klemm. My community, $80 Laura Klemm. Samtastic Scholarship, $50 from anonymous. Item E, Personnel, approve the resignation of Julie Jones as full-time evening custodian at PRHS. Approve the hire of Logan Norris as open gym supervisor. Approve the hire of the following skating rink attendants. We have Zaila Arrow, Zaila Arrow, Hunter Hansen, Berker Hallgrew, Dylan Hoodley, Easton Meadeck, and Jayden Pearson. So we have a motion to approve the consent items. Motion by Greg. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion on consent items? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving consent items, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Consent items carry. So, 10, Business Items. Item A, approve the resolution directing the Administration to make recommendations for reductions and programs and positions and reasons therefore. This is something we've read every year since I've been on the Board.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution directing the Administration to make recommendations for reductions and programs and positions and reasons therefore.
Motion by Brenda, we have a second. A second by Andrew. Okay. So this is a resolution, so I'll read the resolution. So it's a resolution directing the Administration to make recommendations for reductions and programs and positions and reasons therefore. Whereas if the financial condition of the school district dictates that the School Board must reduce expenditures immediately, and whereas there has been a reduction in student enrollment, and whereas if the reduction in expenditures and decrease in student enrollment, the student enrollment must include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of program, and whereas if a determination must be made as to which teachers' contracts must be terminated and not renewed, and which teachers may be placed on unregulative absence without pay or fringe benefits and affecting discontinuance of positions. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 548 as follows. The School Board hereby directs the superintendent of Schools Administration to consider discontinuance of programs or positions to effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures, and as a result of reduction in enrollment, make recommendations to the School Board for discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions, or curtailment of positions, so. So this is a resolution, so Molly, how do you resolve?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Item B, we have approved the second reading of the following policies. Policy 416, drug alcohol and cannabis testing. Policy 504, student dress and appearance. Policy 524, internet, technology, and cell phone acceptable use and safety.
I got a question on this, so. On, and I apologize, we had the first reading back in August, I think, for all of this. So I'm sorry I missed this, but Policy 504, the student dress and appearance code. Is there a way that can be brought up on the screen? Is it... I just was looking for some clarification, if you scroll down a little bit more, right there. So we got that first set of one through four, and then a second set of one through six. The second set of the numbered items is preceded by, such clothing includes but is not limited to the following. Clothing for weather. So I'm assuming that's just snowmobile suits, jackets, stuff like that, hat, stiing gaps. I couldn't, I couldn't understand how this was put together in terms of just understanding it. Such clothing includes but is not limited to the following, clothing for the weather. What does that mean? That's what I'm just kind of wondering, and I apologize for not bringing this up earlier. If we had the first reading and I saw this back in August and I didn't raise it, it's now January. But it just seemed confusing the way this was written here. And then even, even two, three, I guess all of those. Such clothing includes but is not limited to the following. Is there anyone that can kind of explain, maybe, that I don't have trouble following now?
I think, like, if you look at one through four?
Yeah.
What, you know, this is, and then it would include, so your outside ear, like, clothing for the weather, that it needs to apply to those one through four on top.
And then two? Clothing that does not create a health or safety hazard. I guess when I read this, one through six, it was just hard to understand, for, for me. And maybe for everybody else, I'm just thinking about those who have to enforce it. Just to make it clarify, clarify it as much as possible.
Did we change the verbiage when we met?
We changed it back to meet the MSBA, right? Because ours historically was different and more specific. So we went with the more vague wording.
The MSBA language.
Yeah. Because our whole, all the specific language in this.
I'll defer to the majority here, if we feel good about it. It's just that, when I looked at it prior to today's meeting, it was hard to kind of process as to why those things were specifically identified. I get it above and beyond the stuff that you traditionally wear inside, I get it. But clothing that does not create a health or safety hazard, I'm just thinking, if somebody else would force that, what does that mean to them? And I, I'm asking that because I know it all. But, so that's, that's the question or concern that I have regarding through one through six. I appreciate Stacy, your clarification for one, I get that. But I mean, it's like, number two, clothing that does not create a safety hazard. Number five, footwear that does not present a safety hazard. So does that mean footwear that does present a safety hazard?
Like those old Leenies shoes? Can't wear, you know.
Such clothing.
And you just kind of catch all.
Has it.
Okay, well, if everybody's good with that, I'm good with that. And then if you scroll down, I have one other question. Keep going, please, right here. B. Student clothing may not include the following. Two and three makes sense, the way it's written, but one, one doesn't make sense when it's prefaced with, student clothing may not include the following. So clothing must cover areas from one armpit across to the other armpit, so my armpit to this armpit, down to approximately three to four inches in length on the upper thigh, see image. I didn't see an image, but I don't understand.
You don't have one in your head?
The, the, student clothing may not, I'm assuming, I don't know, when I see may, that's kind of permissive, rather than must not, or shall not, but... If, if we're, if we're trying to prohibit, I don't think we're trying to prohibit this stuff in number one, are we? Are we trying to prevent people from wearing what's described in number one, or are we saying it's allowed?
I think we're leading a thing, so that the Administration has the opportunity to force what they choose. I don't know, that was my interpretation, it was very specific before, like, cannot wear a cold shoulder top. Is that really offensive, or is it not? Is there a problem with that? So is the policy maybe a little bit more vague?
I get the vagueness, but one just doesn't make sense. I mean, because that's a very specific description of something.
I don't know.
Is that prohibited, or is that allowed under this policy? What's described in Section B1? Because I can't tell from reading this.
So like, student clothing may not include clothing less than?
It's not working out.
No, at all. I mean, I think it's random, it's not a crop top, but I don't really get that.
If it's a clothing that does not cover?
May not include, so.
It may not include, but number one talks about what is included.
What is, right. The wording is poor.
The wording is for...
Does anybody feel that maybe I could use some additional work?
I have not, like, clothing that does not cover areas from one armpit? If student clothing must not include, or?
May not include.
Shall not?
I'll ask this question. Can I wear clothing that covers my one armpit to my other armpit?
Top to your thigh.
And so long as it's down to approximately three to four inches in length on the upper thighs? Can I wear that, or can I not wear that?
I think you can wear that, but this is it, that you may not.
Okay.
So it's almost like, like, um, clothing less than what's described from armpit to armpit and the thigh. You can't wear clothing less than that.
Sure.
Maybe that is the word.
Does, do all three of these need to be passed tonight?
No.
All, I mean, and if there's a second, great, we can discuss it more. Maybe this morning it gets seconded, but, John, I, I'll make a motion just based on my conversation, if you're okay with that.
Yeah.
I'll move to approve policy 416 and policy 524 as presented. And I'll just pause my motion there, with the idea that there be a second motion to table the approval of 504, so that I can combine them. I can restart my motion.
Just do our motion. So he's going to make a motion to, to approve 416 and 524?
Okay.
I mean, so that one would not be... So it wouldn't? Yeah, we wouldn't. So that's your motion?
Yeah.
Can I just have a question? Did this wording at all come from MSBA? That's where we got this?
I'm not having to find it on here, though. I just pulled up MSBA's.
Yeah.
And I'm not finding that D language.
Have they updated it since August? Tell me that on then?
Yeah, it should say when it was updated.
I don't see... I need to disconnect and lock. I don't see when this is, it's updated, but that, there's where the image is supposed to be, but, um...
Oh, that makes more sense.
But that, that language is not... Yeah.
And I don't mean to take on a pause.
Maybe just you take that one back to the drawing board.
And I'm sorry for not, it, we had the first reading back in August. I apologize that I didn't raise that sooner.
This is covered, isn't it, in the, like, you heard, rules there, so...
So Greg made a motion for policy 416 and 524. Do we have a second?
A second?
Second by Molly. Any discussion on that? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of Greg's motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Resolution carries. So that effectively put policy 524 back to the committee. Okay. All right, we're on to upcoming meetings, so next week is MSBA Leadership Conference. February 10th is a regular meeting at 6 o'clock. March 17th is a regular meeting at 6:00 PM also. And there is no school that day, the district workshop. We have a motion to adjourn. So, yeah, I get the question by Andrew. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Second by Stacy. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion on the hearing, it's MSBA. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. We adjourn.